Twenty twenty-two city council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order, and we will have Councilwoman Sistarsik lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the salute to our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, everlasting.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
Mayor Protem Verapapa.
Here.
And Mayor Kalmek.
Here.
All present.
Next, we'll have the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications on this?
Yes, we have seven supplemental communications that has been distributed to council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody wish to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, then I'll call for a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
Move.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Kalmek, how do you vote?
Next will be presentations and recognition. First one will be Red Ribbon Week proclamation. I will go ahead and read that one now. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic them, and whereas there is hope of winning the war on drugs and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Southeast County Young Marines and the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23rd through the 31st, 2022, has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Mayor Joe Kalmek of the City of Seal Beach, do hereby proclaim the 23rd of the 31st of October as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Seal Beach and urge all residents to join us in this special observance. In witness thereof, I hereby affix my signature and the seal of the City of Seal Beach this 24th day of October in the year 2022. Let's see, now, I'd like to call upon Julia Lynch, who is the Unit Commander Southeast County Young Marines, to accept the proclamation.
Thank you very much. For all that you guys do. Thank you, it's appreciated. Thank you for your time tonight. You may be wondering how this mission impacts us, but as you all know, fentanyl has been a big problem, not only in our schools, but the county and state. And what this program does is it reaffirms with our young marines over there the importance of getting out into the community and their peers and also giving them the confidence to go into their high school classrooms and talk about fentanyl and the dangers of drugs. You can imagine how difficult it is in high school with peer pressure, but this program is amazing and having city support, including Seal Beach, which is never wavering in terms of their commitment to the youth programs and also, let's face it, the military. So I'm a former service member, I have a Marino Corporal over there that just got out. And it's a, this mission is important and near and dear to all of us, so we really appreciate your time and dedication to this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is for Veterans Day, and I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and this will become part of the city's official records. Whereas on November 11th, 1918, the United States and its allies signed an armistice with Germany to end hostilities of World War I, the Great War exacted a tremendous toll on our nation, over 53,000 killed in action, over 63,000 non-combat-related deaths, and the lives of countless others were forever altered. And whereas in 1919, to honor and memorialize these sacrifices, President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November the 11th as Armistice Day, the precursor to Veterans Day, expressing solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service. The City of Seal Beach salutes the generations upon generations of American heroes who have sacrificed so much to secure the blessings of freedom for their fellow Americans, and whereas we can never fully repay the debt we owe the brave men and women who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard. To the more than 20 million veterans alive today, this Veterans Day, we recommit to honor and provide you with the respect you deserve, and whereas our veterans embody the values and the ideals of America and the timeless virtue of serving a greater cause with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made to advance peace and freedom around the world. Congress has provided November 11th of each year to be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans, and whereas our nation has only one truly sacred obligation to properly prepare and equip our service members when we send them into harm's way and to care for them and their families when they return home. For our 20 million veterans, that means ensuring that they have access to the support and resources for a future of security, opportunity, and dignity. This is even more important as we continue to recover from the global COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, I, Mayor Joe Kalmek of the City of Seal Beach, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2022, as Veterans Day. I encourage all staff and residents to recognize the valor, courage, and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate ceremonies, thoughts, and prayers. In witness thereof, I hereby affix my signature and the seal of the City of Seal Beach this 24th day of October in the year 2022. Now, that will again be in our permanent records. And next, we have a presentation from OCTA with regard to our M2 accomplishments, and this will be Director Kia Mordezavi, who will give us the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kalmek, and members of the City Council. I'm with Orange County Transportation Authority, and just want to first of all thank council for the opportunity to come before you and present you a little bit about what Measure M is doing. First of all, we're talking about Measure M in Orange County and not the Measure M that's passed in LA County. So we do, as you can see on the PowerPoint, branded as OC GO, and so you may be familiar with some of the signs that we see out on the projects. So first of all, Measure M, just by way of backgrounds, a half-cent sales tax that was supported by Orange County voters back in 2006, went into effect in 2011, and was a renewal of something that was put into effect in 1991, actually. And it was, I think the one thing about it, important about it, is that all city councils in Orange County ratified it to be on the ballot, and more importantly, a supermajority of Orange County voters supported for it to be basically ratified. And right now, we're in about year 11 of the program, and we've accomplished many things, but here tonight, we're going to talk about streets and roads in a bit, but we do also, the program also provides for metrolink service, that's a service that goes obviously along the I-5 corridor, basically from South County all the way to Los Angeles, and that takes traffic off the freeways. It does, obviously, we talk numerous freeway projects such as the 405. It does also help a lot of local services, such as local transit services in various communities, reduces the subsidies for senior mobility and as well as providing funding for seniors with mobility needs. Also, it does environmental mitigation programs, and one of those aspects is protecting our waterways and beaches from trash that gets collected on the streets and gets washed down to the, and through the waterways to the ocean, so we do install filters, et cetera. So a lot of different elements to it, but speaking of the why we're here tonight is streets and roads. In the month of September, OCTA passed the mark for 1 billion dollars, I'm sorry, 1 billion dollars of Measure M funds spent across the county for streets and roads purposes. And a portion of that went to your city primarily for regional traffic signal synchronization, and hopefully you experience that daily as you, you know, go about your business, as well as keeping, helping the city keep its local streets in the great condition that it is today. It kind of, you could see the 32% of Measure M goes towards streets and roads, and of that amount, roughly 60% goes directly to each city, and it's basically governed by the city council to prioritize it based on their local needs. So for your city, based on our records, it's mostly basically taking care of your pavement needs, which is obviously your choice, and that's what it's intended for. And then about a portion of it goes for signal synchronization, and then you've taken some advantage of that as well as capacity project. Your city happens to be basically built out in terms of roadways, so there wasn't much opportunities there to provide funding for you in that purpose. So in summary, basically, there are about 1.2 million dollars that's been made available for signal synchronization projects along your major thoroughfares, about 4.6 million dollars over this 11-year period that goes for flexible formula funds, and so that gives you about 5.9 million dollars. And on top of that, OCTA has been able to use the Measure M funds to leverage outside money, that's state and federal dollars, to bring another million dollars for your city, so for a grand total of nearly 7 million dollars. So quite a positive program, and basically this is money on top of what you're spending today, so it really makes your dollars go further. So in summary, I would say that it, you know, it helps reinvest monies that's generated here back in your community, and it provides for flexible but also reliable. This money that goes, is generated, comes back directly to Orange County. Other than the fee that's charged by the Board of Equalization to collect it and return it, the remaining amount is all comes back to Orange County, it's not controlled by Sacramento, it's controlled locally and goes according to that formula, that pie chart that I already put up, and you can always go to our website at OCTA and see how it's exactly being spent. So reliability is important because transportation projects takes years to develop, so you can predict that those monies will be there for you. So that was my presentation, I'm happy to provide any additional information or answer any questions if you like, and with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity.
In looking at your numbers up there, that's less than a million dollars a year we're getting. That's not very much.
So.
What's it based on? Is it on population or street miles?
It is, so actually both, a little bit of both. 60% of it comes back to the city based on a formula. The formula considers population, road miles, and the point of generation, so in terms of however sales tax is generated with your city. So we do take all three variables into consideration. So 60% it comes back to you according to that formula, so that's set and is basically, you know, the monies basically are distributed. The remaining amount is on a competitive, it's on a needs-based, so you look at where the congestion is, where the problems are, and as the cities apply for those funds, then they're distributed based on basically priority. So your city happens to basically have a very little congestion, but signal synchronization is always something that everybody can do, and the point of the signal synchronization is to synchronize signals across jurisdictions. Most cities do a good job of doing it within their city, but a lot of traffic goes across, I mean, from your city to other cities or from other cities to your city, so we want to make sure that.
We are allowed to cross the city boundary.
Yes, you are, of course you are.
So on signal synchronization, we have 1.2 million or so. Did we already spend that? Is that what we're going to spend?
That is what's been spent already.
So.
That's behind us.
Okay, so we haven't done that, but we haven't finished the synchronization.
This is, we're in year 11. So each synchronization project, once it's done, it needs to be updated every three years. So over time, as you implement projects, there are opportunities to come and update the synchronization because traffic patterns change. We kind of saw during COVID, patterns changed, now COVID is over, behind us, and then patterns are changing again, and so the synchronization is updated.
So the synchronization, I think, is primarily down Seal Beach Boulevard towards Los Alamos. I know that we have a project planned. Has it begun yet?
I will defer to your Public Works Director.
If I may chime in, Councilmember Masalavet, the Seal Beach Boulevard Traffic Signal Synchronization Project is currently underway, so we installed the infrastructure so far, so the next phase within the next couple months, we'll be working on the timing and implementing the data, I'm sorry, the software as well. You will be seeing the synchronization probably the latter part of this year, first part of next year.
Okay, and that's part of the 1.2 million we've received, or are we getting another bunch of money to pay for that?
A component of it, we have not billed out the Project P grant that we received.
What is your timeline on building out?
Early part of next year in 2023.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom?
Yes. What, maybe our staff, what, in the component of reducing air and water pollution, what have we got for that?
I think the city has been very successful in applying for the stormwater inserts or catch basin inserts through OCTA's ECP program, also commonly known as Project X. So, it means a lot of other things, but so we've inserted these catch basin inserts that captures a lot of the roadway debris and transportation debris, and we clean them out on a regular basis as well, so it doesn't get into our water bodies.
So the catch basins was partially funded by this?
Yes, it is through OC GO, or commonly known as the M2 CTFP program, where 80% is funded by OCTA, and the city has a 20% match.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
If I'm looking at my numbers, it's around 300,000 for various stormwater control measures. That gives you order of magnitude.
Okay, thanks.
Mike? Shelley? Just one follow-up with regard to the catch basins. Is it still correct that the cities along the San Gabriel River have till 2030 to complete that project?
That is correct, so the city is actively working on all the priority areas that's listed, and we do have an application that's submitted for another one of our priority areas, and hopefully we're successful and we could come back with some positive news.
Okay, and one other question, is Pacific Coast Highway, since it's under the jurisdiction of the state, is that included in the calculations?
In the calculations, no, it's not, because that is a, you know, that's a state facility, and state maintains that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do have one more. The stormwater control?
Yes.
How are the other cities along the San Gabriel River doing in terms of accommodating the new rules and keeping the water a little cleaner than it has been, so we don't get all that junk?
I think everybody is subject to the same rules, I cannot speak to their.
You don't know their status. I know some of them are, most of it's in LA County, but there's a few cities in Orange County, Brea, and they have tributaries to the San Gabriel River, so they contribute to that mess.
Right.
But you have no way of knowing?
Not the LA County ones, definitely.
Not the LA County ones.
But in terms of what OC GO or Measure M does, it's intended to be supplemental, so whatever funds the state is making available, Measure M comes on top of that, and hopefully that helps them get there faster and comply.
Are we getting any of that state money?
We do not have any active contributions so far, but to get back to your question, though, let me do a little bit of research and I'll give you an update about what other Orange County cities are doing in terms of compliance.
Okay, Mr. Mordezavi, thank you so much for your presentation and answering all of our questions.
All right, pleasure. Have a good evening.
Okay, next, we're going to have an update from Orange County Sanitation District Construction, and with us, we're going to have Manager Raul Cuellar.
Good evening, Major, good evening, Council and City Manager. I'm here from Orange County Sanitation District. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to give you an overview of our capital improvement sewer program. We have several projects within the city, and we want to take this opportunity to give you an update of what we're doing in the City of Seal Beach. Also, I would like to thank Councilmember Masalavet, because she's a member of our board members, and for her support in our board. With that, I'm going to see if I can make this work. You're not familiar with Orange County Sanitation District, this is our service area. We provide services to about 2.6 million people. We have two major treatment plants, one in Fontaine Valley, Plan One, and one in Huntington Beach, Plan Number Two. And this is just a map that serves all the cities, all the areas that we provide services. So we have a lot of infrastructure, a lot of pipelines, pump stations, that we have to maintain within our service area. How do we receive all the wastewater? How do we provide that service? If you own a house, or a business, or an apartment, or you live in one of them, you normally have a private lateral. The private lateral later is multiple latals going to our lines, into a regional trunk line. That's where we come on, that's where our infrastructure starts. Our regional trunk lines normally are not small, they are like 30 inches from all the way to 120, that's kind of the size that we have, and either they go to Plan One or they go to Plan Two. Once they go to one of our treatment facilities, they can be disposed into our five-mile outfall, into the ocean that is between Huntington Beach and Newport Beach. Or also, at Plan One, we have partnered with the Water District, and we have created this groundwater replenishment system with the Water District, and I encourage you to go into their website and learn more about it. So we reclaim about 100 million, 100 MGD right now, and we have a project at Plan Two that we're working with the Water District to increase that capacity and reclaim more. Within the City of Seal Beach, this map provides the current projects, two of them, that we have in construction and one that is coming up, and that's what I'm here today to talk about. The first one on the north, it's Los Alamos Trunk Sewer. We started that in December of 2021, and we are planning to complete that by early 2023. The one in the east, the Westminster Boulevard, we're almost done. We started back in March 2020, and we're planning to finish that by December 2022. And then we have a future project that is coming on the corner of Seal Beach and Westminster Boulevard, that is the replacement of the Seal Beach Pump Station. We've been working with the city on all three projects extensively, it's a lot of coordination, and I'm going to go into some of the details in the next slides. The Westminster Boulevard, we're 95% complete, as I mentioned. The Los Alamos Trunk Sewer, this involves five cities, it's not only the City of Seal Beach, Rossmore, Westminster, Los Alamos, so the whole project is about 50% complete. And then Seal Beach is going to start in fall 2023, and we're going to complete that in spring 2027. Going into the detail of what was the Westminster project, this project, as I mentioned, is almost done. We have two new 36-inch force mains that we installed along Westminster Boulevard, right in the median. We coordinated closely with the city, we were able to maintain the back lane, I know there was a lot of disruption, but these sewers, this force main, that pump sewer from the pump station, that was built in 1970 and 1990s. So they were due, they were, we needed to rehabilitate those force mains, and we're almost done. We're planning to complete everything by December, you know, we are finishing minor work, doing restoration and landscaping, and doing final paving, and be completed with this project. One of the items, for example, I'm just bringing these that we coordinated with the city, when we were looking at the drawings for the pump station for Seal Beach, we need a new fire hydrant line across Westminster. And instead of waiting for that project next year to build that line, go back into Westminster, excavate again, it was requested by the city that, why don't we do that now? So we wrote a change order to that contractor and said, let's do this now, let's avoid the disruption on the project that is starting next year, and right now, that's what we're doing, we're installing that line, that way, the project that is building that pump station, we're not going to go back into Westminster and going to have to dig that again. So we were able to successfully accommodate the request with the city and minimize the disruption to Westminster Boulevard. Los Alamos Trunk Sewer, this is in the northern portion of Seal Beach Boulevard, Los Alamos Boulevard, and Catella. A lot of this work is sewer and manhole rehab. We have two trunk lines. In this case, this is gravity, the other were force main, pressure lines, but we've been doing this work for quite some time, and a lot of this work, we coordinated with the city to do it at night, also some work is done during the day. You can see in some of the photos where you, manhole rehabilitation, this was built a long time ago and is due for rehabilitation, so this is something that is taking place as of now. And if you look at this map, on the left side, northbound Seal Beach Boulevard, we're planning to complete that by fall 2022. And on the southbound, Seal Beach Boulevard and Old Ranch Parkway, we're planning to complete that by spring 2023. A lot of this is manhole replacement and rehabilitation of our pipes. Also, we work with the city that during, between Thanksgiving and the first day of January, we have a lane reduction restriction during the holidays, that way we minimize the impact to the residents. Going back to the project that is coming up next year, this is Seal Beach Pump Station. On the left side, you can see the existing pump station, this was built in 1970, is due for rehabilitation, we had to do some repair projects, we had to replace some of the pumps, the electrical equipment, and we need to build a new pump station, it is due. And to build this new pump station, we have coordinated this extensively with the city. We work with the city on the landscaping, on the architectural, the size of the buildings, the location of our sign, so we. the location of our sign. So we have had numerous meetings to get your input and put this into the contract that is going to start next year. Once we build this new pump station, we will be able to demolish the old one. And as I mentioned, this is scheduled to be done in 2023 fall and be completed by spring 2027. Going back to the first slide, where I was presenting the projects that we're doing within the city, this is just going back to our current construction. Next one that is coming up is the replacement of the Seal Beach Pump Station. However, when we're done with the city of, the new Seal Beach Pump Station, we're going to be able to build a new deeper sewer along Seal Beach Boulevard. Once we do that, we will be able to abandon and demolish one pump station and have one pump station that we don't have to maintain anymore. These projects are far, right now, they're with planning. We don't have specific dates for those, but they're in the books. Once we finish the pump station, then that's the next set of projects that will be coming within the city of Seal Beach. Another thing that I wanted to point out is, for the Seal Beach Pump Station construction, we have worked with the city on what is the impact of the project, and what we have come to an agreement is, to build the pump station, we need a staging area, we need access for the contractors. So what you're seeing in the screen in red, that is the lane closure that we're going to have in place, and that's going to be happening for three years. However, we also coordinated your paving plans, and the area that is highlighted in yellow, the paving coordination, we agree that we're going to pave that. We're going to pave that curb lane to, all the way to the end, from the curb lane to the median, and that way, we don't have to step on each other with the paving operations, and we coordinated this extensively with the city. Another thing that we do, every project that we have, that we go out into construction, we do a lot of community outreach. We have flyers, we update our website, we have signs, we do community outreach, we have community liaison. We try to gather all the input before it goes into construction. Once it goes into construction, we address any complaint to the best that we can. And this is a lot of effort that we have, and we have a department, Public Information Office, that takes care of this. And with that, this is our website. Also, you can visit us on ocsan.gov for additional information, and there is additional for the construction hotline, and I'm also happy to hear any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Tom?
Clear.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
The pump building, can you take, get back to that picture? Is that?
Yes.
Was that a two- or three-story building?
So we coordinated the height of the building to match some architectural. We have electrical room and wet well. In general, it's more the height we coordinated with the city. We can make it smaller, but that's what, we came to an agreement to look more similar to what the city was looking as a, as a architectural, you know?
And then the, are you subject to Coastal Commission approval on that?
Yes.
And then, the lane closure, can you go back to that again?
Yes.
That's a two-year lane closure?
It's a three-year lane closure.
Three-year lane closure?
Yes.
So we'll be down to two lanes?
Correct.
So there'll be three lanes merging into two lanes?
Correct.
Wow.
So one of the biggest challenges is, if we don't do this, contractor will be tight on the space. And if we do that, we're going to take longer to build the pump station, and we're going to be, it's very restricted space. So what we coordinated with the city is, how can we be more efficient, and how can we build the pump station? We did the three, the three years, and give some space for the contractor to be able to build the pump station.
Are the numbers, like, the traffic numbers higher on Westminster Boulevard than they are on Seal Beach Boulevard? Would it be more advantageous to close a lane on Westminster Boulevard during that time? I mean, I don't know what the numbers are, but, but I think if you're going to close a lane, I mean, most of the people that I know drive north to south and not, not from east to west. So the numbers, I'm thinking just off the top of my head, seem lower. I'm not sure about that, but, you know, if you just need a lane for, you know, construction area, it may or may not be more beneficial for the residents to close West, a lane in Westminster Boulevard. But that's something maybe you could look into for the numbers-wise, you know, because merging from three lanes, going northbound to the freeway, is where everyone's going when they're going northbound Seal Beach Boulevard or to Los Alamedos. That's a big impact for three years. So if Westminster could be closed, it may not impact the residents that much, is what I'm thinking off the top of my head. Is that something you could look into?
Yeah, that's something that we can look into.
There's a bus stop on that little strip there, too. Would that be impacted on the number-two lane? So you would actually stop the number-two lane when the bus comes, because there's a pad there now, and it's used quite frequently.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So you would actually have one lane when the bus is there. So you see the impacts to the residents?
Yeah, I understand.
So, so I don't know if you could use, if you could look at Westminster Boulevard as kind of that construction zone?
Okay.
Or even look at the Naval Weapons Station. They got a boatload of land behind you, you know?
We've been, we've been working very closely with Naval Station.
For three years, lane closure's a long time. That's what, all I'm saying.
If I may chime in really quickly, Councilmember Verapapa. When we talked about this traffic control plan, we did actually specifically do traffic counts for this intersection. And considering both north, north and south approaches on Seal Beach Boulevard and east to west along Westminster, we did talk to try to coordinate with the Naval Weapons Station. However, they're very specific about their buffer zone and areas that we can use for staging. And considering that the westbound approach on Westminster, there are only two through lanes. Closing one through lane will only allow for one, one out of the two traffic lanes left going westbound towards the Long Beach side. So if the lesser of two evils, we picked this location and this variation of it, and talked extensively with OC SAN, their traffic consultants, and of course, we examined it quite extensively as well.
I know it's, I know it's tight, but that's a big inconvenience. I mean, that's a lot of people going northbound.
Boy.
There's schools up there, there's freeways up there, all our shopping's up there.
There's no alternative route.
Yeah, there's no alternative route. So, um, the trenching, the fire hydrant line trenching, you said that's going to proceed in November?
That is happening right now.
Right now, okay.
Yeah.
So it'll be done in November?
That will be done by December. We will be paving, and we will be completely almost done. So this is something that we didn't want to wait until next year. We have a contractor on board, go back and dig something that we just finished. So we did a change order with that contractor and say, let's get it done now.
So is it safe to say that in December, for Christmas present, everything will be taken away on Westminster Boulevard?
That's what we-
All the barrier rails, all the closures, all the dust, all the gravel, all the one-lane configuration? Yes?
That's what we're pushing. We're meeting with the contractor weekly. We're going to punch list remaining items, you know, trying not to have any remaining punch list item, remaining minor things, but that's, that's what we're-
These are important projects, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing, but, I mean, we have, you know, residents to contend with, and just coordination is important. So thank you for that.
And I'll thank you for your patience. I know these are very difficult, complex projects that need to get built, but we impact a lot of residents, a lot of people in the community.
I do have one que, one comment, and you can, might help me. The, you mentioned that you went to the Coastal Commission with this, or are you going to? I think it's out of the coastal zone.
Yeah, you're on the outside of the street.
I think it's right at the edge.
I was in part of the project at the time. I need to check and get back to you. Maybe you were right. This one was not within coastal. I know the permits have been completed, and we're, we're done with the permits, and I think you may be right, Councilmember.
Okay, check that out.
Yeah.
Because if you don't have to do it.
Correct. No, we, we have all the projects, and we know the process is lengthy, and it takes a long, long time. So I apologize for not having that answer.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that, yes, this is outside of the coastal zone. It's just across the street from the coastal zone. If, if there are requirements in the Coastal Act for other reasons, that you may have to approach them, you know, because of connectivity to infrastructure. I'm not familiar with that, but, but this is outside the coastal zone for our city.
And being the old city planner that I am, architecture is kind of the one thing I really appreciate. If this is the elevation of the buildings that you are putting there, you might want to reconsider. I'm not going to be able to be on the OC SAN board after this year, but you need to take a look at what that, those buildings look like. They're just kind of blah, like the one that's out there now, Cinderwalk. But, you know, I remember an old drawing that I saw years ago at SAN District that showed it as a, kind of a Monterey architecture, like a hacienda thing, hacienda-type building. So maybe you want to talk to Kathy Millay, or whoever's in charge of that, and reconsider your architecture. I mean, it's gingerbread. It's not going to cost you a lot of money, because there's no real windows, and there's no real doors. So, you know, it's all to make it look like it's a functioning residence. Hacienda.
And I remember there were a lot of renderings that we went back and forth with the consultant. I'll go back and check how the decision was arrived, but yeah, we-
Because it's, it's pretty ugly right now. That's all I have.
Any final questions? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Cuellar, for spending the time with us-
Thank you.
And giving us that information. Next, it's time for public communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name, please, for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council, and not to any individual, member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. So anybody that wishes to speak is welcome to come to the podium.
George Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. We were talking about the river over here. There used to be a net underneath one of those bridges to collect the garbage that comes down. You should have seen the garbage on, coming down the beach. Chairs, tables, bags, everything. So, what do you do about that? And also, the city manager has been here 10 years. She had a chance to refi the retirement fund, but did not do it. Huntington Beach did refi and saved some money for the taxpayers on the interest. Her time is up. 10 years is enough. The city planner should also go to the First Street, where the application she approved was a Realtor from San Clemente. We have a place that was vacant. To have a place that was vacant on the one on the block, but all of us Realtors were not allowed to be downstairs. So we had to go to the next city planning meeting and let her know, you can't do that. Now, we have a store that takes sales tax. So after the move up on Ocean regarding the lot size, next, the city planner went after some of the people about their site, their lot size. They've been there for years. I've been here since 1970. Nobody ever came up talking about the old houses up on Ocean Avenue. Now we have one down on the corner that's unbelievable, built, beautiful. So, so our next meeting, we're supposed to be held, or where we can take land to build all of those 1,200 units, was going to be up at the Navy Base, or the Air Base. The Air Base, where all of the planes come every summer to give us our shows, the, out there, the air shows. They were here for three days. Why do we want them up there? There's other land where you can put those units. If you go down to where the animal shelter is, right behind the police station, and if you look across the street, there is a big parcel of land over there with the wire around it with grass growing up. Put the units over there, or go to the person that has that land over there on Ocean that's just deteriorated. Nothing's been done to it since I've been here. Tell them, we want that part, and put some, put some nice units over there. You don't have to put them up there by the base, where the Air Base is. That's where they have the wonderful car show, the wonderful air shows come in every summer. And going across the bridge, going south, if you look to the left, there's the boats and trailers, and that land, and all that money goes to a family that charges the boats to have a spot. Who pays for the water? We do.
30 seconds to wrap up.
30 seconds. Well, we need to either give that land to Huntington Beach, or let them buy it from us, because we never get any money. And we're having to just watch all that land go to having the, the trailers over there, where we could be building those 1,200 units. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, Lisa Lando, City Council, District Three. I just want to say thank you for signing another proclamation, recognizing amazing people who are trying to raise awareness for the fentanyl crisis. So far in 2022, we've lost 75,000 people to overdose, and a huge percentage of that is fentanyl poisoning, which is, right now, a lot of our children and young adults, and it's, they're taking something that they don't think is fentanyl, and now they have fentanyl that looks like Sweet Tarts. So thank you for, for recognizing that. Also, I'd like to thank the chamber for putting on the candidate forum. That was an amazing event. Thank you to President Juny Bonico and Corey DeLeon, the moderator. It was great hearing from all the candidates, and just looking forward to an election and having the new council come in, and I'm sure whoever wins will do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Rosie Ritchie, and I am one of the partners at The Beach House. I thought it would be important to come up and give you and the community an update with what's going on with the progress so far. Still today, after signing our lease in March of 2018, we still do not have a gas meter, and we still don't have an electric panel. We do have a generator, but that today- panel. We do have a generator, but that today continued to break down, which delayed all of our workers, all of our power tools, and it continues to be a problem. With great frustration, we went to Madden Jones, Colan Johnson, and they wrote a letter to you, Mr. Steele and Jill, and that was on October 3, and we still have not heard a response. We are hoping that you take this matter seriously, and you respond to us so that we could all come together and get the beach house open for business. Early, you said, Mr. Vera Papa, that three years to close something down for construction was a huge inconvenience, and I agree with you. We're four and a half years closing the beach house, or what was the River's End, and it should not be happening. It would be great to say, could we have the beach open, the beach house open by Christmas, just like we're asking for Westminster? That would be, that would be a great gift for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close public communications, and next we'll ask for a city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the one item on the posted agenda. All members of the council were present, took a report from staff, and took no reportable action.
Thank you. Madam City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a couple items tonight. First of all, I have a couple project updates, so I'd like to start with an update for the council and the community on where we're at with the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center project, and I'll invite Denise Bailey, our assistant engineer, who's the project lead, to give us a brief update. Denise?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city staff and public. I'm excited to give you an update on the Tennis and Pickleball Center project. Part of our project team, you have me as the project manager, you have Thomas Dawson as the city, and he's gonna be the construction inspector and construction manager on the site, so I wanted to introduce you guys to him. And then we also have Jack Panatappanen, who's been our architect throughout this last year. So last December, I brought the conceptual design plan that we had feedback from the council and also the public on. So since that last December, we've been in design of it, and we've actually completed ahead of schedule. It's already passed through the building department, and we're gonna be taking that out to bid shortly, so I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the project and how the design's coming about. So this is the current clubhouse as it sits today. As you see, there's underutilized areas, those white areas. One is a patio, and the other was a foyer. So we're gonna be enclosing that space, which gains us 510 square feet to the interior of the building. We're also gonna be rearranging to add the clubhouse into the locker room into the clubhouse to make one holistic building. So that is the showers and restrooms, and add that in. As it currently sits today, we don't have showers, so that will be added in. This is our proposed design. As you see, we will have a larger multipurpose room, which is designated by color. This will be able to house events at the clubhouse. We will also have pass-by doors to be able to see the outside games going on, to really bring the outside indoors for the public. We will also have showers, lockers, updated utilities. This project also includes updated IT, security, and utilities throughout the project. So this is the existing site plan. As you see, the locker room building in your upper corner that's designated in green, that's gonna be demolished, and we're gonna have that as landscaped area, and that can be a future project. Well, maybe we get one or two pickleball courts in that area. So there are future plans for that, that is not included in this project. I'm sorry. This is the proposed improvements. In the light yellow, those are the courts that are currently unlit. So this project will also include site lighting. So there are currently four unlit tennis courts and eight unlit pickleball courts. This project also includes updating all the light fixtures to LED, so there'll be LED fixtures throughout the clubhouse, throughout the site as well. All right, so the project improvements that I've spoken about, so they're also, sorry, so this, as I talked about, this will go out to bid in about three weeks. We're looking at awarding construction in January and then finishing by the end of 2023, which is what we talked about last year in December. So we're currently on target, and we're hoping to finish sooner than that, but that's what we have so far. So these will be all the updates that we're offering to the, for the project. Community outreach. Currently, we've had already some outreach in the open house for the tennis center, Tennis and Pickleball Center. We've received comments back from the community. We also have a website that has been live since last December. We also have an email address, so if anyone have any questions or comments, they can put it that way. Also, before we start construction, we're gonna house two public outreaches. That way, we can let the community know of the upcoming events that will happen, as well as any safety concerns, and answer anyone's question at the time, and also have them meet the team. We will work, we worked closely with the recreation department, as well as the members of the Tennis and Pickleball Center staff, so we will minimize the impacts to programming and the use of the center. We know this is a highly-used center. We know that this is a very exciting project, so we will definitely take all that into consideration during construction. And then I'm gonna pass it actually over, if you would like to kind of discuss a little bit of the outreach that you also talked about?
Thank you. Mayor and council members, my name is Thomas Dawson, and I am going to be the city construction inspector for this project. I'm very excited to be part of this project, realizing that this is a very high-profile project. Community outreach is gonna be extremely important, so I think that the pre-construction meeting with residents will be critical, as long, as well as monthly updates, so that we could meet the residents out at the job site and give them monthly updates of what's happening. I think that will go a long way to minimizing telephone calls to this board. So, thank you very much, and I'm very excited to be part of this project.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Any questions?
Exciting.
Yes, very exciting. We've been out there quite a bit, and just to give you guys some peace of mind, we are taking into account, you know, IT, security, utilities in the area, everything that has to do with this facility, not just what's within these projects. That way, we don't have to go back out there, and once we tear up some concrete, re-tear it back up in five or 10 years, we're looking at what the site looks like as a whole.
Will the roof be updated too, the surface of the roof, or is this?
So, we actually, yeah, we actually re-roofed it in 2019, so that roof will be staying. But the areas that are currently un-roofed, such as the patio and that pass-through area, that will have the same roof as a 2019 roof, with the same warranty.
Chili?
I wanted to know what you were gonna be using as your construction staging area, and if there'd be any interference within the center or with pedestrians or anything outside?
Yeah, so great question. Let me go to the site plan. Okay, so we've had several meetings with the recreation department, as well as the staff at the Tennis and Pickleball Center, to go over what their impacts are, when their trash trucks come, when their landscapers come, and just the overall pedestrian path that are normally taken. As you see behind the clubhouse, which is in the, I'm sorry, the locker room, which is in the bright yellow, there's gonna be a lay-down area back there, which they can have. We're also gonna recommend to the contractor that if they decide to tear down the locker room first, that they will have that more space for their lay-down area, which might accelerate their construction. But on the part of that, we would make sure that they, that is currently our restrooms facility, facility, the most of them, so they would have to have restrooms for the public, and we'd make sure that those are to the public standards. Of course, they wouldn't be the regular portable.
Like portable restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. And the lighting, the lighting is still gonna be a secondary project, or the lighting of the new courts and?
Yeah, it's currently in this project. Yes.
And as far as the LEDs, I think I discussed this with you earlier about working to make sure everybody was happy with the quality of the light, because I've heard some complaints on Heather, so.
Yes, we will ensure that happens. I know that most LED lights have different fixtures on them, so this will be definitely something that we look at during the construction.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
The blue lighting, is that, is that the lighting or the electrical line for the lighting?
The
Blue line?
The blue line is just the designation of the courts and also the, it also shows the current electrical skew, so we're gonna
Not the number of lights on the court.
No, 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 no.
It's proposed lights.
No, 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 sorry. The Tennis Center courts currently have six poles, and the pickleball courts will be as well. The new addition of the pickleball courts are actually gonna be 25-feet poles. Currently, the Tennis Center poles are 30-feet, so we're gonna have them match in kind, but a little bit shorter.
Will the LED be a cost savings in the long run for the city?
Yes, definitely. Currently, they have to wait for enough lights to go out in order to get a lift up there to change out the light, so this will be cost savings, not only in maintenance, but also in monthly fees.
Did you mention the timeline for the project, when it's gonna be completed?
Yes, so last December, we said a year for design and a year for construction, and currently, we're ahead of that by a little bit, so we're looking to bid this out in the next couple weeks. Award in January, and then we'll be done by the end of next year, 2023. We're hoping to be done sooner than that, but that's currently our schedule.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question, is, if I remember, the, is upgrading the landscaping part of this project, or is that something down the road?
So there is a little bit of updating. If you kind of remember the plan, I don't have it on here, but just behind the current locker rooms, there's some hedging that won't really make sense once we take down that building. So we're removing that hedging and adding more, a little bit of grass area, which will be seeded to match that area. And then, per your guys' discussion last time, we will take a look at the foundation of the building, once we remove the locker room building, to see if that concrete is salvageable or not, and will, but most likely, it will be a landscaped area.
And then the, the room at the very back of the property, which was, you can be, I don't remember exactly what it was slated for, but is that, is that currently up to snuff, or are there, is there going to be a need for further improvements in that as well?
Yeah, so currently, as the building sits right now, it's in much better condition than the other two facilities, so we currently will have it as an alternate bid item. When we bid this out, it is fully designed, but with inflation, the way that it is, we're preparing for, if something needs to be an alternate bid item, it would be that, because it's just minor things that need to be done in that facility. It's had a roof recently, it was re-floored recently, it does have a drinking fountain and some form of AC.
And is the, is the plan that it would be able to, the main facility would be adaptable and nice enough for having community events, weddings, or anything else that would fit into the schedule?
Yes, exactly. The plan is to set it up so it's another community building, so it's not just for members that, you know, love tennis and pickleball, and we know that there's quite a few members that definitely love that, but we want to have another community center. So we do have a warming kitchen that is set up so that it has plugins for catering in order to bring in their equipment, so it is already housed for a larger population than it currently serves.
Great, thank you.
Is that picture on the website?
So it has these plans on the website, but it has these plans on the website, but I will update the plans.
And then the, the bathroom, the toilets, is there like a magic number per toilet for capacity, or?
Generally, one per toilet.
Are you asking if you got a specific toilet just for, I'm just kidding. It's been checked against, it's already passed building codes that has been checked, as well as ADA and capacity in our, we just had our sewer lines cleaned in that area and ensured that we didn't have to up the sewer line size while we were out there. So, yeah, but there are enough restrooms for the capacity of that facility.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Denise, very much, and thank you very much as well. Happy to have you with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. Have another project update tonight. While we're updating, I wanted to ask our acting Public Works Director, Iris Lee, just to give a brief update to the council on the status of the Lamson Avenue Bike Lane Gap Closure Project. Iris?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Appreciate the time to entertain one more Public Works update tonight. So this one is for our, the Lamson Avenue Bike Lane Gap Closure Project. As you know, we've been talking about this project a lot in tandem with a lot of other efforts that are going on within the city. However, we haven't really spent much time talking about the specifics of what this project entails since 2016, or possibly earlier, when we first submitted this, this project for ATP, or Active Transportation Grant, application. So the driver of this project then started with the need to, or the desire to provide a bike lane along Lamson Avenue between Seal Beach Boulevard and Basswood, where upstream and downstream of this section does have a bike lane, but nothing in between. So 2016, we submitted an application and was very successful in obtaining federal grant funding in, in the magnitude of about half a million dollars. So, moving forward in 2020, we started out the design plans, and now in 2022, we are ready to move forward with the request to the California Transportation Commission to allocate construction phase funding for us. But while we prepare for that, I want to take this moment to refresh our memory on what we committed to in our 2016 application. This is a little bit on the smaller side, but I will be walking through the design details. So to start off, the stretch of lambs in between Seal Beach Boulevard and Basswood will receive pavement rehabilitation. As you all know, this is very much needed, because we've had a number of excavation for various project efforts throughout the years. In addition to that, we do have ADA-compliant curb ramp upgrades, along with some minor traffic signal improvements, which would include pedestrian and, I'm sorry, bicycle push buttons to accommodate for those bike lanes as well. However, to squeeze those two bike lanes in the east and westbound direction, some things do need to give in that limited right-of-way area, which means some above-ground features will need to be either removed or modified. So I do want to take a moment to point out the three most notable locations. The first one is along, of course, Lamson Avenue, just east of Seal Beach Boulevard. This is in front of the, the commercial center, in front of the Ayers Hotel area, where the existing raised median will need to be removed and replaced with a painted median to accommodate, again, the bike lanes in each direction. Moving further east, just east of Old Branch Plaza intersection, we have the same scenario, again, where a raised median does need to be removed, similar to the scenario that we just pointed out. And then finally, moving towards the project terminus closer to Basswood, where we're fronting the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center. In front of the parking lot, we do need to push in a little bit, about six and a half feet into the parking lot area to accommodate the bike lane. However, we do have an oversized parkway and oversized parking spaces adjacent to Lamson in that area, where the configuration and the parking stalls will not be impacted in that parking lot. However, there are some landscaping that needs to be redone, because we are going to be pushing into that direction a little bit, so we are gonna be introducing some trees and landscaping in the area to provide more variety and interest, in addition to what you see in that picture currently. So, but, sorry, excuse me. So, moving forward, we are currently requesting for CTC approval right now, so we don't miss our funding opportunity, again, about in the magnitude of half a million dollars to get this constructed. And this concludes my update, and appreciate your time and attention on this item.
Thank you, Iris. Any questions?
In front of the parking lot, the tennis center, that, the sidewalk will still be able to be maintained there?
Yes, there will still be ADA-compliant sidewalk along the frontage, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Okay. Thank you, Iris. And then, finally, just have a couple calendar updates for council in the community. As all of you know, next Monday, October 31st, is Halloween. We're excited. Since the last three years, we haven't been able to do it. We want to invite the council and community out to our city-sponsored trunk-or-treat event, which we hold in the parking lot at Electric and Main Street, on, right next to Athens West Restaurant. It's a great event. We'll be out there from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. All of our departments participate in this. It's a great opportunity for our staff to be out, and interacting with community and families. It's also a friendly competition between our departments, on who can design the best trunk for this event, and it's a lot, it's just a lot of fun, and as I said, an opportunity for us to be out, and for the community to be able to meet our staff, and be able to talk with them. So, we invite, again, our community to come out, especially kids and families, at the parking lot next to Athens West, next Monday, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then, finally, just a reminder that this Wednesday, October 26th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, the city will be, along with Mayor Kalmick, hosting a grand opening for the Zoder Dog Park opening, so we'll have refreshments, some pet vendors out there, and a dog photo booth, and again, want to thank Mayor Kalmick for all of his efforts. He designated all of his council discretionary funding for last year, as well as this fiscal year, in order to make this project become a reality. And with that, that concludes my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for council comments. We'll start down at the end, the very end.
I am at the end. More ways than one. December. You've gotten a really good update on the San District, and what it's doing in the streets, and its timeline for construction, but let me talk about mosquitoes again. I know you're sick of hearing it, and it is October, and it is getting cold, and the mosquitoes are becoming dormant, but they have left a mark, definitely left a mark this summer, in terms of West Nile virus, and being uncomfortable from the mosquito bites. So, it looks like Seal Beach made it through without anyone getting West Nile virus this year, that I know of, anyway, but we still had a real invasion of the 80s mosquito, that you read about all the time, and that's not going to go away. It's just going to get worse. And one of the things you need to look at next spring and summer is typhus. If you have a cat that goes out, it may get bitten by a flea that is carrying typhus, and then, you will catch typhus. Now, luckily, it's not deadly, like the Dark Ages, but there are antibiotics to take care of it now, but, you know, it's probably not a very pleasant thing to get. So, be careful with your cats. Keep them inside, because the coyotes are out there, too. And just know that, you know, it's just another thing to keep a watchful eye on. Thank you.
Tom?
I have nothing to report. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report, but I did attend the Parklet Subcommittee Meeting. We received updates from the city with many options, and got great input from the business owners on Main Street. Look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Shawit? Thank you. I attended a West Orange County Water Board meeting, a Heather Park Concept Meeting with city staff. Thank you, Iris. I attended a West Ed Development Project Scoping Meeting, City of Los Alamitos, and I attended the Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum. I'd like to thank the chamber for putting that on, and letting us see all the candidates that are running for office, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the Environmental Quality Control Board Meeting, with regard to the proposed construction and rebuilding of the Chevron Station at 1300 PCH, and it was rather spirited, and I think we have a long way to go, and a lot of further discussion with regard to that project. I attended a Governor's Roundtable Listening Session. This is put on by the Governor of the State of California, and is being hosted by former Mayor of Los Angeles, Anthony Villarogosa, and there were about 23 of us, it was made up of various mayors of Orange County, some elected county and state officials, and they basically were interested in hearing what our various cities needed in specific projects. So, I did not fail to mention the, something that possibly could be done on the San Gabriel River, where we basically need somebody to, an agency to corral the 53 cities and two counties, to work on a viable solution. Right now, in my last four years, I've spoken to virtually every elected official at the county and state level, and it's very difficult to get them to look beyond their particular area of jurisdiction. So, it was interesting. I also mentioned a bridge, not too far, but across the Navy Base, going from City of Seal Beach, and down into Surfside. We badly need a bike, proper bike lane, a protected bike lane, and we started working on that, hoping that when the Navy was spending $165 million on the new wharf, that there might be some money left over for the bridge, but, no, they, you know, scheduled it, and budgeted it right down to the nickel, and there weren't any extra dollars for that. So, I mentioned that as a possibility, something that I certainly would like to see. And I attended, as guest speaker, at the Seal Beach Women's Club this week, and provided a lot of updates, and they had a lot of questions, and that was a, it was a very good meeting. I attended the Candidates Forum, put on by the chamber as well, and that was very interesting. And also, on the Parklet Subcommittee, you know, we hope to have further discussions, and want to assure everybody that no final decisions have been made on anything with regard to permanent Parklets, and we're, you know, I just, my two cents input was that hopefully, we have both those people who are opposed to Parklets, and those that are in favor, to work together to see if there is a middle ground that would satisfy the needs and concerns of both sides. And that's, that was my week. Okay, we have no council items tonight. Next is the Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by council members, and since we did not pull any items, and I'll call for a motion in a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Don't move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Would you please vote? Are we able to do that? Mine keeps going, shutting itself off, so I have to log in again.
Mayor Kalmick, does that mean you're a yes? I can mark it for you.
Yeah. It's not here, anyway.
Okay, I went ahead, and I marked you as a yes vote.
Were you asking me how I was voting?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Whatever it is, I'll vote yes.
Motion carries five votes yes.
Thank you very much. And next, we have no public hearings this evening. We have new business, Item J, which is going to be the introduction of an ordinance, amending the City of Seal Beach Municipal Code by modifying Title IX, and some subchapters, and so forth, and that'll be presented by, was going to be presented by Alexis-
I'll still introduce it.
Who will now turn it over to somebody else.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, we have, despite its length and technical nature, what is a fairly routine item of updating our building code and related codes. And in a moment, I will turn it over to Building Official Dennis Tranggo, to give you a very brief presentation on this item. However, we are one of the supplemental communications that was provided to you this evening, to make some technical corrections to the ordinance that's before you, and I do want to go over those for the benefit of you and the public right now. These are the following typographical errors that have been corrected. Fire Code Sections 321 to 324 were incorrectly referenced, and it has been corrected to be Sections 324 to 327.2. Fire Code Section 501.1 scope is corrected in the first line to refer to OCFA Guideline B-01, instead of B-09. Again, these are very technical corrections. Amendments to the Fire Code Section 510.2 and 510.3 are removed, and therefore, those sections are not amended. Section 903.2, Item 1, reference to Section 903.219, is corrected to 903.2.21, and the exception added language-to-read exception. Subject to approval by the Fire Code official, open parking garages in accordance with Section 406.5 of the California Building Code, that are smaller than the area specified in Section 903.2.10 parentheses 3, or 903.2.10.1 of the California Fire Code. Section 903.2.8, Item 2, exceptions have been removed. Section 10.4.3.2 is deleted and replaced as follows. Where the fire, where fire service mains enter the building adjacent to the foundation, the pipe may run under a building for a maximum of 24 inches, as measured from the interior face of the exterior wall to the center of the vertical pipe. The pipe under the building or building foundation shall be 304 or 316 stainless steel, and shall not contain mechanical joints, or it shall comply with 10.4.1.2.1 through 10.4.3.2.4. And finally, Section 1205.2 is hereby deleted. And most of these, as mentioned, as described when I read them, referred to the Fire Code. And Antonio Solaris from OCFA is also here, if there are any questions on that specifically, but at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Tranggo from TransTech, who's one of our building officials.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. We're back again. Every three years, we adopt a new Seal Beach Construction Code. The California State Commission, by reference, gives us a new building code, allows us to amend certain provisions of the code, provided we provide them findings, topographical, geographic, climatic findings. We are proposing to adopt the California Code with our existing amendments, the California Building Code, Fire Code, the Electrical Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Green Building Standards Code, and existing building code. So, tonight, what we're proposing is to read by title for the first reading, waive further reading of the Ordinance 1700, and schedule a public hearing for consideration of a second reading on November 14th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? None, okay.
Of course, you've read it page by page.
Yes. Sounds like a great idea. Could we then have a motion in a second?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Once again, my loner iPad is shut off, so.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabet, I noticed that you have voted yes. Councilmember Starsek, you have voted yes. Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
That passes.
Five oh.
That's Ordinance 1700, an ordinance of the City of Seal Beach, City Council, amending the City of Seal Beach Municipal Code by modifying Title IX, Chapter 9.60, Building Code thereof, and adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Code, 2022 California Residential Code, 2022 California Electrical Code, 2022 California Mechanical Code, 2022 California Plumbing Code, 2022 California Fire Code, with certain amendments, additions, and deletions thereto.
Thank you. Before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to take a moment to introduce our new fire chief, our local fire chief, Division Chief Craig Covey. He'll be taking care of us for the next several moments, and we appreciate you coming. Okay, next, we will adjourn. I'm going to adjourn the City Council to Monday, November 14th, 2022, at 5:30 PM, to meet and close session, if deemed necessary. Thank you for your attendance.